Six o'clock. We can get the meeting started. If you'll please stand, we'll have an invitation and a pledge to apply. Right? Yes.
Father, we thank you for bringing us together this evening for an opportunity to conduct the people's business. Lord, be with the petitioners, be with all those involved in the process, be with us as we keep an open mind and look forward to the future for a better Pickens County. We ask these things in your name, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I plead the leades to the flag of the now established America, to the revolution of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is reading and approval of the previous minutes. Are there any corrections or motions regarding the minutes?
Page four, under section C, second paragraph down there, it should be condition of approval in some columns. And it was a quote from the first paragraph at the top of that page, it is the A-G and the C of A-G on the fourth line down on that page.
All right. Are there any other corrections, comments, do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion to move and approve the minutes based on corrections pointed out. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. There's no old business, new business. We have two rezoning requests for us tonight. RZ 190246, Ryan and Rebecca Prather. I'll ask Wes if you'll give us the recommendation for the planning commission.
This is RZ 21190246, Ryan and Rebecca Prather, 216 Flea Market Road, Jasper, Georgia 30143. Location is 216 Flea Market Road, Jasper, Georgia 30143. Rezoning from highway business to rural residential. Parcel ID is 053B019001. To rezone highway business to rural residential. The current use is highway business. Character area is suburban infield area. Lot size is 6.25 acres and the access is Flea Market Road. His only history is the subject property is currently zoned highway business according to official zoning map. A review of the zoning records indicate that no zoning files have been located regarding the subject property. The executive summary says the applicant requests a rezon is 6.25 plus acres on the west side of Highway 515 from highway business to rural residential. Parcel ID 053B019001. The applicant is requesting this change for the purpose of to refinance with the residential The recommendation from the staff is that the staff who recommends approval for the rural residential zoning request, parcel number 053B019001. And this additional comment I want to read is, "In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony in order that this information be part of the record and shall be available for the board commissioners to review."
Very good. Thank you. Let's see. Ryan and Rebecca?
Yes.
Do you like to add anything to what's been said?
I think it sums everything up.
Okay. All right. And Tim? Where's Tim? You're at. Tim, you want to speak?
You can come prepare, but I signed up just in case I need to.
Okay.
I think they're going to try to build a house on this property and I probably would have wanted more than anybody else down there. I've got 16 acres and this is all family property. We've had it for sale for 10 years and there's no interest in it under commercial.
Yeah.
I mean, zero. I've been doing board real estate on my own property. There's no interest in it. I'd come for a board two, three years ago with Hopes, the residential, but there's no interest in our property. I don't know if it's because of the big power line that runs through there and there's a creek that runs through there, but we've decided as a family, we're going to, I'm going to build it there myself. Y'all will see me here next month. I'm looking to do the same thing. We've opted to build down there, so I support them. My problem borders them and I'm supporting them.
And what's your relation to these nice ones?
We're spurs cut.
Spurs cut?
Yes.
Very good.
But it's been a family, probably 100 years and we've just opted now we're going to live there and we're looking to build a house there ourselves.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board with the applicant or Wes?
I've got a quick question. Just out of curiosity, have you given any consideration to splitting the property in half due to the proximity of it being the 515 and the general approach that the county takes on not loving changing from residential to agr- I mean, to business? We already got highway business. Have you thought about splitting it in half or something like that, leaving part of it as?
Well, our house is within 20 foot of the four lane fence.
Gotcha.
So, I mean, it...
Doesn't make sense.
It's where it's at, you know, it makes sense. And then we are, our borders the power line, so a lot of, it depends on how, who would want to purchase it so, and what they could do with it. It's just, we had, we had it on the market too many years ago and there was only one developer and that was back in '08 and then they, they lost, pretty much the developer went under that was going to buy it to sit and we just, we haven't been successful since then.
I got you.
Okay. All right. Are there other questions? Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed, no one opposed. Thank you. Congratulations. Now, do you understand this is just a recommendation?
Yes.
The commissioners themselves will take it up. I wouldn't dislike those. Thank you. All right. So we'll close that hearing and we'll open a new hearing now on, let's see. RZ 190266, Gary Copeland coming. Wes?
Okay. This is RZ 22190266. The applicant is MSMD LLC, 2196 Fitz Road, Jasper, Georgia 30143. The agent is RF Gary Copeland and the location is 1150 Sandy Bottom Road East, Jasper, Georgia. Rezoning from ag to agriculture to highway business. The parcel ID is 051033 and proposed use is highway business. Current land use is developed agriculture and the character areas are Tate and East Pickens Conservation Area. Lot size is 238.31 acres and the road access is Sandy Bottom Road from Highway 53 East. The zoning history is the property, subject property is currently zoned agricultural according to the official zoning map and a review of the zoning records indicates that no rezoning file has been located regarding the subject property. Executive summary is that the applicant requests a rezon over 238.31 acres at 1150 Sandy Bottom Road from agriculture to highway business. The applicant is requesting the zoning change to develop the property for resale or multi-use. Okay. One more page. The recommendation, the staff recommends approval from highway business to, for highway business from agriculture with one condition, that there's a minimum 50-foot buffer along and across all residential and adjoining properties. Additional comments of that the, "In addition to this memo, I hereby incorporate the entirety of my office's files and the video recording of the planning commission's hearing, including but not limited to all witness testimony in order that this information be a part of the record and shall be available for the board commissioners to review."
Thank you, Wes. Mr. Copeland, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Would you like to add to what's been said?
I think it's pretty well covered.
So, you're either going to develop or are you going to...
No, sir. I just want to keep adding to what we've already done to it, keep this one track, not disturb the neighbors, but, and maybe spend, I've spent all I've got on it, but I'd like to incorporate into a business and spend a couple more million dollars on it, repurishing once they are, the old barns and stuff and make a business out of it. But definitely not take away from any of the aesthetics of the town of Peyton and sure not upset any of the neighbors, not approach on any of them, but as we're doing in the past with the dirt stolen, the buildings, it just might be even better yet. That's our, that's our idea.
All right. Thank you. All right. We've got, there are a number of people have got some interest in this.
Sorry?
A number of people have got some interest in this. So, I've got four people who have asked to speak and let's see, is it, trying to read the, is it Jean, Bonnie Jean? Yes, ma'am. Would you please stand and give us your full name and your address, please?
Name is Bonnie Jean. I live at 105 Cory Road and right across the street from the Tate Elementary School, gymnasium, and there's a lot of traffic, I mean, I've been there almost 30 years and the traffic, there was virtually no traffic coming down there. When I moved in there, the traffic has gotten horrendous now as it is and Mr. Copeland wants to make this into highway business and what kind of business, what I'm interested in. And the, I mean, it's hard for me, when school is coming out, when they're letting out now, I virtually can't get in and out of my driveway. And with the traffic the way it is, and what kind of business is he going to be running, you know, is he going to be developing, coming in and out of down Highway 53? Kind of traffic are we going to be, you know, what kind of buildings are going to be going down through there? I mean, that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
You know, how is this, what kind of development is he, why does he want to change from agriculture? One of the reasons I bought there is because it's agriculture and I kind of live backing off the road. My home is secluded, it's private and I like it that way. I want to keep it that way. I'm only five or six miles from town and that's one of the main reasons that I live there. What kind of business is he wanting to incorporate into there and develop on over 200 acres? You know, and that's what we're interested in.
So your, your primary concern is traffic?
Right. Traffic and what is he going to develop it into?
Understood. Thank you. Amelia? Amelia?
I'm going to defer my time to Mr. Bray, if I could.
Oh, to Mr. Bray?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And I've got, is it Gober?
Gober.
Gober.
I want to defer to Mr. Bray also. He represents the joint property governor.
You know, the way I run these things now is like speaking now forever holds your peace, so Mr. Bray's going to carry the water for you.
Well, I will say something. I'm not a resident of Pickens County. CJ Gober, Jim, if you need that for the record, but I've had close attachment to the property that's adjoining, that was at the end of Sandy Bottom's road before Mr. Copeland took the action to have the county abandon it when there was not access to it there. But I would say that that's one of the most beautiful areas of your county, from the Tate Mansion out through that area, and I would like to see it one day just be a group of metal rooftops over your, very attractive and wonderful area in this county.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Bray? We've had an hour of due hearing before us in the past.
Yes, sir. I would call on the board to get a podium for the medium so that material could be set on so that you could look at your material while you speak.
Knowing you, I know that you already really know what you want to say.
Yes, sir. I've probably only done a thousand of these things over the years. I do live in Pickens County. I've been up here a number of years. My place is up here. I practice in Jasper, Ken, and other places, of course.
So you're a business student?
Right, yeah. I think I can do that. What I'd like to say to you is that there's a certain burden that's supposed to be placed on the applicant and for her to gain a successful approval by this planning board and it is a planning board. It is not just someone who takes a look at it. Never in my career have I seen a letter of intent, which is an integral part of your application process, that said anything about what's going to happen with this property. There are numerous uses under highway business districts you could put on there and I hope y'all have driven out on Flat Bottom Road, I'm flat, I'm sorry, on, on that Sandy Bottom Road. I have. You have. Did you see, sir, the two signs that said at the front of it, no trespassing?
I didn't pay attention to them.
Sir?
I didn't pay attention to them.
Well, I did. I don't trespass on somebody's property because somebody was threatened with a risk while actually driving on that road or a portion of that.
Well, I was invited, so that's why I didn't pay attention to them.
Well, I don't know who invited you, sir, did Mr. Copeland?
It wasn't recently, no. This has been a couple of years ago.
Well, let me state, sir, that if you put a, the ordinance calls for you to put a conspicuous sign on rezoning, you can't put a conspicuous sign on this property to get notification to people. The sign is behind a no trespassing sign. So I stopped. I couldn't find the sign.
Are you talking about the sign referencing the rezoning application?
Referencing that meeting, notifying the public of this meeting. When you come down Highway 53, it is an absolute gamble to access this property from either end of Sandy Bottom Road. Absolute gamble. But yet we're here to see it to consider a hundred acres minimum for use, you don't even know what that use will be. How in the world if you gain a recommendation of staff for approval, well, we don't know what is going to ever happen with this property. You could literally go in there and use it for the new highway business district if approved and you don't even know what kind of road it's going to be. We have nothing to indicate the amount of traffic this number of development would create to gain access to 53, but yet no citizen traveled down 53 would even know this on this application is before you.
Well, a couple of people did because they're here.
Sir?
A couple of people did because they're here.
Yes, well, there, how many are not here because they didn't know what is the question being presented? There is nothing...
I can only count the folks that are here. I can't count the folks who didn't know that.
No, sir. The ordinance...
And neither can you.
Yes, I agree. I agree with you 100%.
Okay.
But the ordinance says create a conspicuous sign. It doesn't say it's limited to just behind a gate that's locked. Property values, there's been nothing to indicate there's been any effort to market this property as agricultural or any other thing other than highway business district. That's one of the criteria, under your criteria to consider for math amendments. You don't just come in here and say, "I want to use, I want to develop my property." You should know some degree of certainty or direction for how you're going to develop the property. Are you going to include some way to have good access to the property for the benefit of the citizens' travel? Or is it going to be a destination? This lady spoke up over here that agriculture is what brings, she was out there and she made the observation that traffic is a bear on that road now, the curves on the road, the elevation of the road and meaning to say that we're going to plop in 200 acres of highway business district when you can't even tell if you can get to it except by Sandy Bottom Road. And Sandy Bottom Road couldn't handle it? Is, is there going to be something done there? You need to know some intended use. Should be some evidence of need. That's in your criteria. There's been no demonstration of need. Right up on Highway 5 is a significant large tract all the way highway, already highway business district. I would submit to you that your plan don't recommend it. Will it provide any excessive or burdened use on public facilities, service pools, and parks? How can we make a determination of that, meeting that criteria when we don't know whether there's going to be due, due place? You could even have adult centers on a place like this. You can have numerous things that will create traffic, but you don't have a thing to decide whether traffic's going to be created low, moderate, or severe. None of the criteria are there. Nothing to indicate whether there's going to be anything to protect the use of the creeks and the flood plain, areas like that. Just somebody coming in and say, "I've got 100 acres and I might want to develop."
Well, there are building plans that have to be submitted and approved by the planning department before those buildings...
Sir, have you read those building plans, how modern they are in highway district? What you're suggesting to me, Mr. Chairman, is that, oh, okay, the building department will take care of it. Does the building department have the authority to demand that there be a, a full-scale highway built to this property?
They're going to have to...
I'm telling you, sir, that the criteria, you and I getting in a debate, not apologize that.
No, you don't. You're not apologizing to me. You're making your points and I understand that. But don't...
If they produce a set of plans, they have to issue what is called a directive of regional impact, which is going to affect multiple counties, multiple DOT roads, et cetera, et cetera.
And I've only done this 50 years.
Yeah.
But you're now saying that because if something might happen in the future...
Depending on the size, yes, sir.
Depending on the size of it, yes, sir. But he could reduce that size and only use 25 acres.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, he could. So therefore it defeats all that regional impact. What we're saying here is that, hey, look, I might do something good in the future, but the criteria set out in the zoning ordinance that says demonstrate that now so you can give a proper recommendation to the commissioner. It doesn't say wait and see what he does a year now, five years from now, so, and is it compatible? This lady's pointing out it's not really compatible to drop in highway business district because when you look at your map, you see sizable agricultural areas and forestry things. And your ordinance says seek to protect that and seek to make sure before you change that is a wise decision.
Okay. We got other folks that want to speak, so wrap up.
Yes, sir, I will. I'm the fan.
You're making your points.
In summary, I would say under section 11, the criteria has not been made to justify a recommendation of approval. There are eight different conditions on which should be considered. I would say that the ordinance makes it clear that he has the burden of proof to carry that he's met that criteria for his proposal. That has not been met. There's not been a thoughtful consideration of his intended use.
Well, you really don't know that. You're speculating because you just haven't seen it.
He's speculating.
Who, who is he?
The applicant. He's speculating that he can find a use for 100 acres of highway business district and he's asking you to go along with that speculation. That's, that's, Mr. Chairman, that is the, that's the dilemma in this case. Nothing's been presented here for you to make a thoughtful consideration what will happen with 100 acres of highway business district on a highway that if you've been down there visiting, you know that it is a dangerous highway to try to plop in traffic coming and going. I'm submitting to you that it's premature. I'm submitting to you that it's not meant as burden. I'm submitted to you that after thoughtful reflection, the recommendation ought to be taken out.
Thank you. Okay. Evan Howell?
Yes, sir.
You're going to speak in favor. It says for.
I'm going to do my best.
Okay. Come forward.
Well, I worked a marble company, been working marble company a long time, oversee a lot of property for the marble company. As you know, we neighbor him in a, in a large way and at some point in time, all the property the marble company owns in that area is all mineral interest property. It will be developed into industrial all the way around there. I mean, the company's held it for all these years and, and it's probably coming sooner than I would ever thought, you know, the, the way that the white calcium carbonate's used in the country now, all across the country, it's in everything and, and the short supply and, so they'll see things coming that, that they probably won't be happy with if they're not going to be happy with it because commercial is commercial, industrial, it will have to be industrial eventually and then properties was owned by George Marble and the Tate families before this zoning all took effect and we never got involved in any of that zoning and these properties that's beside them that should already been industrial, should have maintained and stayed industrial because of the actual reason that they held the property. And as far as Sandy Bottoms goes, when, when Gary bought it, it was, it should have been zoned commercial because it was a, it was the biggest junkyard in the county, in all county surrounded. I mean, he removed 400 cars. It was, had a shop on it, a full-scale maintenance shop. It had a auto body shop with a paint booth and everything else that you can imagine and he cleaned all that mess up. So if the zoning should have already been commercial to start off with and the feller mentioned about when he traveled into the place, how beautiful it was. Well, if he would think back 10 years ago, there was 14 mobile homes on that property that was failing and rotten and about 500 truckloads of garbage. I mean, it was an ungodly amount of garbage that we, that he hauled, he paid to haul it off. I helped him, helped him, so I noted to be the fact and, you know, if you'll think back about the Tate Mansion and the Tate Mansions, I guess it's probably zoned some kind of commercial of some kind and then the plant there and then the property that joins them all the way around, it's all part of the same parcel. I know it's divided up by the way the people look at it, but the way the company looks at it as a whole. All the property is held as a whole. I mean, it's got divided by highways and all kind of little things here and there and, you know, I know in the future, probably within the next 10 years, we'll be seeing a lot of that property developed into mining properties by Emress and the Tate family, most likely. And I don't know how we could oppose as a neighbor. I don't live in the county personally, but I've worked here all my life. I've lived here a great deal of my life, born in this county, but think a lot of it. I love that place and it is a beautiful place, but if Gary hadn't come along to take family with him, never invested the money in cleaning that mess up for it to look like it did and I believe that's about as truthful as I'm being with you, buddy.
Thank you, sir. We've got William Prince.
Yes, William Prince. I live on Shady Oaks Lane and my property borders Sandy Bottom's Road. And I was at the meeting where Sandy Bottom's Road was taken off of county maintenance and I was assured that I would have access to Sandy Bottom's Road to get to my property if only I could get to that section of my property. And so my question is, the other gentleman said there was no trespassing and all that and the gate on the property. Is the property, is Sandy Bottom's Road currently public access or will it be public access should the approval go through? If I could get some clarification on that.
So you're not, you're not saying you're for or against, you just want to know?
Right. Depending on the answer to my question.
Understood. Thank you, sir. Okay, Wes? Couple of points have been made. You've got concern about traffic, you've got concern about proper notice. Is a proper notice placed there?
The state statute for that is 3666-4. It says a sign containing information required by a local ordinance or residence shall be placed in a conspicuous location on the property, not less than 15 days prior to the date of the hearing. Now, we questioned, can we put it outside? No, we have to put, place it on the property and we got access to the property, placed it on the property. Should we do like they do in yard sales and put a sign out front that says, "Sell me"? I don't know, but we did what the code said.
So your people placed the sign?
Correct. On both, on both the east and the southwest part of it. Yes, sir.
The new plan says no trespassing sign with it.
Here, you've had your time, okay?
Okay.
You're done.
That's only on one side, by the way.
So, Mr. Bray also referenced section 11 indicating that there should be some further explanation in terms of exactly what...
And if you look in your packet, I did list all those, Clayton, if you will look at it. Compatibility with adjacent uses and districts, and if you will look across the street, it is Highway Business. There's actually a small piece of Highway Business up on Sandy Bottoms Road on by the county. There's also an industrial designation, as you know, that was talked about. And it is extensive, several thousand acres, actually. And there's several other zoning that are similar. And it's funny, 'cause I talked with Mr. Bray last week, and he said, "Oh, it's on Highway 53." Well, that's no problem. I shouldn't have no problem with Highway Business there. But he's changed his mind here.
Mr. Bray, Mr. Chairman, I know, but we won't have an answer to that. Mr. Bray, that's absolutely untrue.
You did. You told me that-
Absolutely, he didn't ever say that.
Sir, you're out of order, Mr. Bray.
Mr. Bray's out of order to bring that up, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think you're correct.
That did not happen, Wes, right?
I don't know why you would dispute that.
That is foolish.
I'm gonna ask you to leave, Mr. Bray. We don't use that language in this, in this meeting. Go out the door, please. You're done.
So, the property values, it also states that subject property values are related and are used under the land intensity district. And suitability, the proposed land use intensity district is suitable according to the Tate Comprehensive Plan, which allows for this. And, but not necessarily the East Pickens narrative, however, it does have similarities with the current land use map. I went through all the different ones, and says there need appears to be a power growth base in Pickens County and the Tate area. And the East Pickens Conservation District area has numerous subdivisions, agribusinesses and highway community businesses. I went on through Public Six, I mean, Number Six. As you will look, and also Number Seven, consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. Although I did note that the East Pickens Comprehensive area narrative has a little conflict, but however, it has similarities with the current land use map. And that's on page 85 on the Comprehensive Plan. And then Highway Business Zoning District is appropriate for the Tate character area according to the Comprehensive Plan. And the proposed zoning does conflict with the East Pickens again, however, has similarities with the current land use map. So I did go through all eight of these.
I did, and I just wanted to make sure it was properly in the record. Let me ask you this. Mr. Prince raised a concern about access to his property.
Now, that particular east side does not have any no trespassing signs on it. It's the bottom part that is, that's owned by the, hey, there's a Benton, L.O. Benton family. And they have a sign up there that is controlled by a gate. However, on the east side, I don't see where there is any restriction. There's numerous houses back there, including a business. That is made with commercial.
Mr. Prince, did that address your concerns?
No, I guess, I guess my concern is, is next to the pink house, where Sandy Bottoms Road comes in 53, is that accessible?
Now, like I said, on the east side, there is no restriction. There's, it's a public, it's a public use road. When he turns off the Sandy Bottoms Road going west is where he has his gate.
There's a gate there by the barn.
Now, that's the separate side. That's the southern part. I'm talking, Mr. Prince is talking about the eastern part, correct?
I'm talking about at the green barn.
Right.
At the green barn.
The pink house and green barn.
There's a gate there.
Yes, there's a gate there. And that's been abandoned to the county. There's a minutes to that. I have a copy of it here. And, but that's after the L.O. Benton property.
Mr. Cope, can you shed some light?
It's right across the street.
Yes, it is.
It would not access.
How did you hear?
He said you would never be denied access.
Thank you.
Mr. Bray, can I say one thing?
Yeah, I was gonna follow you.
I'm gonna stay in compliance with the comprehensive report that we have. And I said that we would not divide that 200 some acres. It will stay as one portion. Now, I've owned that property a little less than 20 years. And most times, I don't go there for 24 months. And I've never created any traffic problems. And usually, the only people who go there is Evan and I, and they'd love Sandy to go there. And I'm not gonna do anything to create any traffic problems. I just wanna upgrade the property. I've spent several million dollars on it already. But I wanna upgrade the engine motor. And I don't wanna do anything to change the aesthetics of the Tate village. I don't wanna do anything to hurt any of my neighbors. And for Mr. Donjin, the traffic that's been created, I have nothing to do with that. And the traffic will continue to get worse on Highway 53. It's just a bad thing. But I don't have anything to do with that. And I wanna be a good neighbor. I don't wanna bother any of my neighbors. And I'm gonna have my neighbors out there. I wanna be a good neighbor.
Mr. Cope, my concern is, what kind of-
I don't know yet. I'm still in the planning stages, but it will not be-
That's what my concern is, not knowing what kind of business-
It will not be anything that will affect you. I promise you that.
That could create that. Like I said, I've been there almost 30 years. I like my decent gentility, the situation there. And not being in the city, that's one of the main reasons I live.
I will never, I'll never do anything that will affect your livelihood. And I have a support.
That's, that's what my concern is, is not knowing what, what has may come of this friend that-
Yes, ma'am. And I won't. I won't affect you. I just wanna be a good neighbor to everybody.
And you want with Captain. I'll, I'll give you that. I mean, I've, I've known you from here. I used to ride my horses down in there before that was, you know, all closed off and the hunting club took over.
Right. And that's always that closed it off.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna give this gentleman, you deferred to Mr. Bray.
The only thing, I hate for something to be left out that's important to know. And Mr. Cope has neglected to mention that he has his property under contract right now to sell it to a business that's going to fly helicopters, build helicopters. Once it's sold, closing dates in March. And none of that's been mentioned. I don't know why it's not been, but it seems like that's something to tell all of the choir about.
That's been a while.
Mr. Cope, would you like to address?
I have not, I have not done anything at this point. I've got a lot of things in the making, but I guess that's something to hit up a little. I have not contracted anything.
Mr. Cope states he hadn't done anything, so. All right. Other questions from the board, for Wes or Mr. Cope?
I got, you don't cross over the creek, do you? All this is inside the creek, in between 53 and the creek, right?
If you come in the east side, I did cross the creek.
Yeah, you cross back there, but I mean, the property, 238 or whatever it is in question, is inside other than crossing over that driveway.
Well, I own property on both sides.
Yeah, you own some property on both sides. Is this part of it as well? So if you go to the other side, you're gonna have to either build a bridge or something, which is-
Just come in either side, yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe one day, right, but a bridge, but across the nation. I had intentions to build a covered bridge across it. But it takes money.
Further questions from the board?
Yes, there's a, I noticed there's a number of buildings and houses already owned there. Are any of them occupied or plans for it to be occupied?
No, no doubt. One of them is just a small cabin with a playground around it where we have occasional a birthday party or a wedding. The other one is a cabin I built 10 years ago for my son, but nobody lives in it. And my intentions are to tear the old chicken houses and stuff down on it.
Same for the weddings and parties there? Is that, anticipated being a venue for that type of business?
The which one?
You said for weddings and parties.
No, it's just a little small cabin, like a 20 by 30 that we built. And we've had a couple of family weddings there and a couple of family birthday parties and so, no doubt.
Just family, outside. What type, you said you're gonna use multi-use businesses there. What type of future businesses do you anticipate?
You know, we've got a lot of plans in the making. I'd like to put a business there that, like I said, doesn't create traffic, something that, I'm looking at a business that would like to go there for the corporate office. And a corporate office slash retreat for their employees, and maybe add another cabin or two for getaway. Something of that nature that wouldn't change anything about the farm.
Add another cabin or two for what purpose?
Ma'am?
Add another cabin or two for what purpose?
For like, put a corporate office there, and maybe their employees that would have add a cabin or two for a getaway for their employees, maybe for a weekend or something. But not change anything about the whole 250 acres.
Okay, so you're gonna sell the entire 238 acres?
If I do, I'll still be a part of it, yes, ma'am. If I do sell.
Still be a part of it and-
Yes, ma'am. I'll stay, I'll stay a part of it if I do.
That's what I was saying. I was wondering how you could assure somebody that they would be, you know, that would still have access to their property if you were selling it to someone else?
No, if I do sell off, I'll still be a part of it. I won't completely get out of it.
Okay. If this company does purchase this and put their headquarters there, how many employees do you anticipate they would have?
I don't know yet, because like I said, I've got several ideas. So I don't know yet, but whatever I do finalize on, would come, still come before y'all in the board commissioners. Or at least come before Wes is, depending on the value, yes, ma'am.
Further questions from the board? We have one hand up there.
Yes, sir. I just have something that I'd like to-
30 seconds.
Put on record. It's a public listing for Mr. Cope's property for 238 acres. It shows pending under contract. And this agent, Kara Conway, Conway, has stated that it is to be sold to a helicopter company. And I don't think the neighbors-
I have several contracts holders.
I'm Kara Conway.
That's one of the companies.
I know you said 30 seconds, which is not 30 seconds.
Yes, that's one of them, yes, ma'am.
That's one of them.
And if that one was a very successful one, I'd stay with them, and they'd have 12 employees.
So you're going to have several different companies in there. This is one of them. You have several others?
No, I'd only sell to one company. I have several in this between the place. This particular company has been looking for a place like Sandy Bottoms for numerous years. Something that's beautiful, peaceful, and secluded, and it would change nothing about it.
They would not test the helicopters there after they were manufactured?
If they bought it, they would keep one helicopter there. That's, that's their corporate helicopter. If they take it, they own 24. They stay out west for 10 months out of the year. They have several locations around America where they maintain their helicopters. And this would be their corporate helicopter, if they were a successful one, yes, ma'am. But we, we would have many more talks before that.
I guess I don't understand how you say you're going to be part of the company and yet you're selling it. Are you an officer in that company? Are you leasing or are you selling?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have to sell 100% out. I can stay a part of it, yes, ma'am. I can stay a part of the memory I serve too. As I have in the past with many companies. I sold my top run business 20 years ago, and I still stay a part of it.
Further questions from the board?
Me individually, I've exhausted all my money's into the farm. I spent several million dollars. I need to go to the next level to keep it going. And I've never done anything to hurt the building of Tate. I've always kept trying to improve it. And if you can remember the Tate, looking at it from the Tate house, from that valley, you couldn't see through it. I paid Evan and him to clear all of that out so you could see through that valley now.
Does Georgia Marble own the mineral rights on that property?
Yes, ma'am. Along with Emress and the Davis family, and I own some of it myself. But, you know, they're, they're in agreement with what I wanna do. And I'm actually a partner with the Davis family.
Wes, have you learned or heard anything tonight that caused you to change your opinion about your recommendation?
I would probably try and figure out a few more added things to our condition, but it would have to be worded correctly, only because there are concerns. You know, again, there's, there's businesses all around there, and he's right in the fact that the traffic's there, but it's not because of those businesses there, especially on school days. On the weekends, when I've been down there, it's really not too bad at all.
You don't live there?
No, but I have gone to church there, and I have seen many things there. So traffic, yeah, of course, that curve is tough. And at school, let me tell you, I try and go a different way if I can, or go early or go late. And that's only because I'm not looking at properties and trying to figure out what I'm doing with my job. But would I make additional conditions, possibly? But I don't think I would change my recommendation because of the Tate Conservation Area.
One of the questions that was raised had to do with perhaps future construction relative to the streams that run through there. You would have say on any setbacks relative to making sure that any, any future development-
Correct.
Did not met whatever the state's requirements are, or requirements are for setback in the stream to preserve the integrity of that stream.
Correct. Not only that, I had explained to Mr. Cope and to the surveyor that they would have to have an elevation study and make sure where they are within that realm also.
Another nightmare down there already is the Jeep Fest also. It's already been added to this.
I can't help you there. All right. Further questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'm with the motion. We approve the request with contingencies for the gentleman to have access to his property. They're gonna have to obey all the state federal guidelines on creek setbacks as are. And I just have a real difficult time understanding or believing that if we can't put commercial on the state highways like they're set up for, then we're, excuse me, we are setting one heck of a precedent that I would hate to be a part of. So I make a motion. We accept it as applied for.
Is there a second?
Not a second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Names three opposed. Motion carries. All right, that will close that hearing. Are there any board comments? Are there board comments? Any public comments? All right, the next item is appointment of officers. And Nicole has listed A, B, C, and D. I'm gonna first go to C, which is, I want to recognize that Pat Holmes and Jim Fowler have been approved by the commissioners for another second term. Thank you. And we would then go back to item A, which is the appointment of the chair by the planning commission. Is there a motion?
Can I make a motion? They can keep the chair in town.
Are there any other motions? All in favor of that appointment, please raise your right hand. Appointment of vice chair by the planning commission. Do we have a motion for the vice chair?
My move would keep swanwood, yeah.
All right. All in favor of that, please raise your right hand. All right. We need to appoint a secretary. All right. We need to appoint a secretary. Folks, folks in the back of the room, could I ask you to be quiet, please? Appointment of secretary. It seems like to me that Nicole's been doing a pretty big job. Nicole, you did refer to this as the dungeon, though, when I asked you. Would you like to, would you care to share why this is affectionately called the dungeon, or is that just something you decided to do?
It's just very dark and dank down here.
All in favor of Cole continuing? All right. Congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you.